Happy New Year, everybody, 2023. I would like to call this special village board meeting of Monday, January 3rd, 2023, to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Here.
Trustee Poczek.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. A unified, one-upping, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public discussion of agenda items. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Before we go to public, the attorney would like to say something. Attorney Peter, please.
Anybody who's gonna make a comment, again, please just keep it to the topics that are on the agenda today. If not, and if otherwise overruled by the board, I will cut your time short. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Yeah. No? None? Please come over here and state your name, your address. Oh, yeah, it's January.
Yes, it is Tuesday, January 3rd.
That type of mistake is Tuesday. Thank you. Yeah, it's Friday for you, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. See, new business. Okay.
I think he's just playing with the microphone. Yeah, you can continue.
Go ahead, Mayor, you can go.
New business, number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business item one, not item two. Is there a motion to waive first reading on business item two?
So moved.
Trustee Light.
Second.
Second, trustee Schmidt. Discussion. None. Role call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Poczek?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two is approved. Number two, an ordinance to approve a conditionally use to permit an adult-use cannabis dispensary establishment for word-of-weed DBA IV Hall located at 2130 Bloomingdale Road, Unit B, in the Village of Glendale Heights. LNI first reading is waived, ordinance 2023-01. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-01?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Who is second?
Second.
Second is trustee Pat Maritato. Discussion. Trustee Schmidt, please.
I don't know how many of you saw on TV before Christmas Ivy Hall opened a dispensary in Chicago, which Mayor Prister attended, and he was very complimentary to the operation of Ivy Hall. And I think we are lucky to have a business of this type to be located in our village.
Anybody else? Role call board, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
No.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Poczek?
No. No.
Mayor Coker?
Where is the other trustee?
Mary's not here.
Mary is ill.
Okay, she's not here. So the thing is, even if I vote, it will be.
Oh, I'm sorry. We only have two noes.
Only two noes, we have three yeses.
Mayor doesn't vote.
We need four votes for approval.
Yeah, so my vote is yes. I mean, for this dispensary.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carries. The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-01 is approved. Number three, fiscal year 2022, oblige 2023 budget review discussion and approval, Mr. Pauling.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. It's my pleasure to always present information to the board, and tonight I wish to present the second quarter fiscal year 2023 village budget amendments. As a general refresher, and everyone has a copy of the presentation at the dais and for executive staff. As a refresher, here's where we have come from, and here's where we expect to go with the budget. First quarterly budget adjustments were approved by the board back in August. The next budget review after tonight occurs in April or May, I'm sorry, in March or April, followed by a final review next May or June. The remarks tonight will involve high-level summary information. Detailed adjustments and the reasoning behind the adjustments was included in the worksheets that all the trustees received back on December 8th. Principal assumptions driving the proposed second-quarter revenue adjustments are based on the data that we have available at the time, including actual receipts for the first three to four months of the year, along with revised estimates released from both the Illinois Municipal League and the Illinois Department of Revenue. We're recommending tonight to increase our revenue estimates for the general fund by $1,766,272 to a new total of $31,630,982. This table provides a summary of all the revenue categories, and the information that will follow in my remarks will break down categories further, demonstrating where adjustments are coming from and by how much. Monitoring of major revenue sources remains the high priority of the village and the finance department. Spending estimates can only be as good as the revenue that supports them. Taxes make up the majority of general fund revenue, and they serve as the greatest revenue source to the village. The village is quite fortunate to have a diverse mix of sales tax-producing businesses, including automobile dealerships, home improvement centers, and grocery stores. You'll recall in the fall of 2021, the village lost the highest-producing sales and home rule sales tax business in the town when a medical supply company relocated to another village. So in preparing our estimates for 2023, an extra measure of conservatism was used. Fortunately, sales and home rule sales tax revenues have exceeded expectations, as you can see in the table. Real estate transfer tax revenues are also up due to the recent sale of the Monroe apartment complex. And last September, the Illinois Municipal League updated its forecast for local use tax and also made significant projection increases for income tax. To better illustrate the diversity of sales tax-producing businesses, notice this chart which shows sales tax collections by major category for the 12-month period ending September 30th, 2022. Sales tax generated from our vehicle dealerships leads the way in the amounts paid, followed by our two primary home improvement centers. In the category of licenses and permits, we're able to make an overall favorable adjustment due to additional video gaming machines that'll be coming online in 2023. Charges for services category, the village assumed financial control over the annual family health and safety fair event, so those revenues, along with corresponding expenses, have been added into the budget. In fines and forfeitures, the major changes relate to the anticipation of adding a second truck enforcement unit in early 2023. Also, estimates for red light camera fines have been lowered as compliance improves. This chart below shows you the red light citations issued for 2021 compared to, I'm sorry, for 2022 compared to 2021.
Excuse me, can I ask, are we asking questions as we go, or are we waiting till the end? How do you want to do this?
Ask them while they're fresh.
Okay. On the gambling, gaming?
Yes, sir.
What do we know about that penny, penny of pull tax? Are we gonna, are we gonna get into that?
The penny tax has been approved by the board 18 months or so ago. It is in the court systems. There is one court case that has been adjudicated in the affirmative for municipalities that have opted into the push tax. There is still one court case out there that has not been, has yet not to be adjudicated. Once that case is adjudicated, which I hope will be in the affirmative for the villages, we will then be able to implement our push tax and hopefully go back in arrears to the point of when we started it.
Okay, good. Thank you, Doug.
Many of the companies are reporting the push tax, but they're not reporting either a dollar amount, or they're reporting that they're filing under protest.
Good, so we can, in other words, if this goes in, ought it back?
We're gonna, we'll see what the court say.
Ought it back pay?
We'll see what the court say, but we will certainly, if eligible, go back in arrears to the time that we implemented the ordinance and ask for that money in full.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Doug, are you keeping any record on how many pulls for the penny?
Well, we don't keep those records, right? The gaming companies have to keep those records?
Do you have any idea what?
They, they do provide in their monthly reports. Those that choose to report do show us the volume of pushes.
And what is that, a number?
It's a big number.
Yeah.
It's a great big number. There's commas and everything in there. It's a big number.
Okay.
We're just, we're waiting for that to work its way through to court systems. But the original case has been adjudicated in the positive, and we're waiting for the second case.
You wouldn't be surprised if I told you that there was one company that sent us a FedEx envelope, so they paid good money for that, to send us all change for their month for those people that said that reported. So it's like $18, all in quarters, all in change. I'm on to rental and program fees miscellaneous revenues. Rental and program fees at the senior center were increased, and additional programs were added, resulting in more revenue coming in. Towing fee revenues have also been increased, and there have been also some surplus public works equipment items sold on Gov. deals that weren't in our original budget. In all, there's a net revenue increase in the general fund of $1,766,272. I'm gonna now turn my attention to the expenses. This is a summary of the expenses by department, the expense changes by department, and I'll be reviewing some of the detailed changes in the next couple of slides. Shown here are the major areas where additional funds are needed and the main reason driving the request. The village board approved changes to the police pension fund actuarial funding policy statement back in 2019, and in doing so, they committed to a proactive approach in making sure benefits are secure for members while keeping the cost of the plan stable for the next generation of taxpayers. Additional contributions determined as 10% of the prior year general fund surplus. So based on the surplus reported in fiscal 2022, that additional contribution comes up to $668,000. Also, a transfer will be required from the general fund to the golf fund for the anticipated delivery of new golf carts that are expected to arrive this spring. Also, the Northern Illinois University survey conducted last year revealed that residents prioritize public safety and infrastructure as most important. Traditional thinking of infrastructure might be just limited to streets and sidewalks, but another important infrastructure asset are our parks, and in particular, our athletic fields. With that in mind, the mid-year budget is proposing to turf two ball fields at Nauso's Park and a soccer field at Camera Park. Estimated cost for this work, including fencing and lighting, is $1.25 million. I'm not ready yet. I'm almost there. Improving these amenities is expected to generate significant revenue by attracting more teams to come to Glendale Heights to play games. Administrator Flint will be speaking to this project in greater detail at the end of my presentation. Also, matching funds are being proposed to leverage the DCEO grant that's pledged to expand and renovate the senior center. Also, the board in 2022 approved ordering vehicles for the streets division due to the uncertainty caused from supply chain issues. Funding needs to be carried over from the prior year from FY22 for these purchases. One other mid-year budget change that impacts staffing and community development includes the hiring of an additional full-time office technician. This position will provide specific support to the rental and real estate transfer program. Other significant increases to the budget come from increased gas and fuel prices, repairs made over this past summer to the HVA systems and administration and in the mayor's area, and additional funding needed for outside review of right-of-way permit submittals. Major general fund expenditure reductions come from salary and benefit savings from the deferred hiring of the assistant village administrator and part-time office technician positions in the administration. They also come from savings in the public works streets and parks divisions that stem from staff changes and vacancies, proportionate savings in the administrative costs from the red light camera fine program, and two trucks that were anticipated to be purchased for the streets division and the parks divisions that will instead be brought under the enterprise vehicle leasing program. The village board heard from our independent auditors back at the December 8th meeting regarding the condition of village reserves. While it may seem that having reserves to cover almost a year's worth of expenditure is too much, taking into consideration the economic outlook for 2023 and beyond, it would be in the village's best interest to maintain these levels of reserves so that we'll be in a better position to weather a recession should that occur. Keep in mind that government tends to trail the national economy, so if, when, there is a recession, if we aren't already in one, we won't necessarily feel it immediately.
Bill, quick question for you. Our, our funds coming from the dealerships, have we noticed a decrease in sales tax with the dealerships? I mean, I know they've been really kind of low on their supply.
Three of the dealerships, I would say, are down. There's one dealership, I'm not really supposed to tell you which one, you probably figure it out, has reported higher tax, significantly higher. It's probably almost more than double the people across the street.
Okay.
On the, the other end.
On the other end.
On the other end.
Got it. All right. I was just curious.
So I'm on to the golf fund now, where interest in the game remains strong, as you can see from the rounds played in information 2019 to 2022. Thanks to this environment, the golf fund overall is able to hold the estimated subsidy that it needs from the general fund to a much lower amount than has been the case in past years. The one major revenue adjustment in this fund relates to the transfer for golf carts, I mentioned it earlier, that are coming this spring. As for now, the budget for food and beverage operations is status quo, pending the responses and the direction from the recently released banquet request for proposals. Recreation fund continues to experience fallout from the effects of the pandemic with respective programs and participation levels. Program revenues from all sources are up slightly, while expenses are down. This combination will result in the fund needing to use an additional $19,000 of its reserve fund, but the fund has about $719,000 in reserves as per the 2022 fiscal audit. For presentation purposes, I have combined the motor fuel tax fund and the infrastructure fund since funding for road improvements comes from both of these sources. Two revenue changes come from an increase in the per capita estimates for motor fuel taxes from the Illinois Municipal League. The village also received its final installment of the rebuild Illinois funding, which was not included with the original budget. Also added to this budget is the flood alleviation grant that's coming from DuPage County for Pearl Avenue and James Court. Due to the nature of projects contained in this, these funds.
Excuse me, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Hey Doug, regarding the, the bridge tax, when is that gonna go into effect when they start tearing our bridge up?
Well, the Bloomingdale Bridge is scheduled for a complete rebuild starting in the spring or summer of '23. So.
It's gonna hit us then, big time.
Yeah, so the plan, you know, one lane at a time, so traffic on Bloomingdale Road Bridge will be hazardous. But it's scheduled soon.
How long will it take for completion?
Couple of years.
Couple of years?
At least two years.
I asked them, it's 2023, I go, why can't you just build one offsite, cut this one off, fly a new one in, and put it together? But they say technology's not there yet.
Okay. All right, thanks, Doug.
Okay.
You built the bridge in Florida in three days.
I know. I know.
You gotta watch those engineers in Florida, having come from Florida. So I'm on the infrastructure combined motor fuel tax and infrastructure funds.
Mr. Flint, I have a question. Are we going to widen that bridge or keep same?
No, this is a county project.
Okay, it's not ours.
So the county is completely redoing the bridge, but it's the same overall width, and the infrastructure and the ground at the railroad tracks is what's deteriorating right now. So they need to take the bridge apart to get to the footings.
So rather than focus on these numbers, I thought that there would be value in providing a status update report that Public Works prepared back in October. This gives you a better representation of the many important projects that are taking place in Public Works. There will be similar slides to this when we get to the discussion on the environmental fund in just a few minutes. And the project list extends into two slides. There's the second slide. And all of this is in your material. One amendment in the park development fund budget is to recognize the second and final year of the Elgo Energy Community Contribution that was part of the electric aggregation rollout. The boards previously earmarked these funds toward the community garden project. The only change I have to mention within the seven TIF district funds is budgeting for the final sales tax rebate payment that was made to Kelly Moon Properties out of the North Avenue TIF number one. This TIF expired on December 31st of 2021. In the debt service fund, we've reduced the transfer from the environmental fund relating to IEPA loans to coincide with later repayment schedules due to the digester project completion date being pushed back a little bit. The corresponding reduction's also been made for the estimated principal and interest payment that was expected to be made on those loans. Now I'm on to the revenue and expense summary for the environmental fund. Environmental fund's defined by governmental accounting standards as an enterprise fund. Therefore, its operations, including capital maintenance and debt servicing, should be recouped through user charges and fees. The only revenue change that's being proposed impacts the IEPA loan, as I mentioned a moment ago, for the water supply facilities rehabilitation project. That project's scheduled to begin on or around March or April of 2023. Showing here are the major increases that impact the environmental fund on the expenditure side and the main reason behind the requests. And this slide represents the major areas where budget decreases are being proposed, the main reason behind these, and the main reason behind these requests. The most significant reduction being the IEPA loan payments that I've already mentioned, and a reduction in the volume of water purchases from the DuPage Water Commission. And as I previously mentioned when we were talking about the infrastructure and the MFT funds, I thought there would be value in sharing the project status update report that Public Works prepared back in October. This gives you better representation of the projects in the environmental fund. These projects on this particular slide are the water division projects. The next slide are the projects that impact the sewer division budget. And then finally, there are the projects that impact the wastewater treatment plant division budget. Last but not least, is to talk about the two capital funds. The changes in the capital funds are comprised of carryover funding for the purchase of a virtual host computer equipment. Also included is a transfer from the general fund for the ball field and soccer field improvements, as well as the match for the DCEO grant for the senior center expansion renovation project. And I will yield the floor to Administrator Flint to speak about the athletic fields.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. While this slide presentation comes up, one of the fundamental, this microphone, right, one of the fundamental purposes of government is to provide services and ensure that our youth are educated, are fed, are housed, and have recreation and programming, and programming to work on making them successful as they go through life. That's a big part of what our village is about, and it's why we pay taxes, and it's why the education system exists, and it's why recreation exists, and it's why the general purpose of government is to provide needed resources to our residents. So with that, we have spent a considerable amount of resources and money on major park upgrades. Camera Park just got completed. Reskin Park upgraded five, six years ago, maybe a little bit longer. But during that, during that renovation of Reskin Park, the ball field was completely redone and done well, and it's a pretty playable baseball field, although small. We have not put any money and time really into our other recreational facilities at our parks, outside of building playgrounds. Our parks are not in good playing shape when it comes to our athletic fields. Just for some comparables, Wheaton's got turf field for soccer. Carol Stream, which is where all of our softball teams have gone to, they have four turf fields at McCaslin Park down North Avenue. Their turf fields are 10 years old, and they're actually up to be remodeled this year or next. But they have four turf fields where youth from seven years old to 15 play, and adult softball, men's, women's, and co-ed leagues dominate over there as well. Winfield Park District's putting in turf football, soccer, and baseball fields. This is our camera park field. Now, granted, this was taken a few weeks ago, as we were getting ready for this presentation, but this is the lighted field to the west of Taylor Rental. This is generally how it looks, not to throw anybody under the bus, but you can't, it's, it's played on so much, those, that grass never regrows. Right? And it's also used for other purposes other than soccer. So that grass never regrows. This is how it could look, with a turf field and there, we kind of half did the turf and half did our field, just to show you a little how it could look. This is our Nauso's baseball field. This field is rented by one organization. We don't have any teams old enough to play in this field currently. It, the, you can't see it really, you can see it here. The footprints there you see are goose prints. You can see the slopes as you go down the first base line. Water drains right to first base. I rented this field for my team, and as you guys know, I'm very involved in athletics. I'm very involved with youth ages eight through 17, 18. I still manage a 17-year baseball team. My team. My team, when my son was 13, I rented the field because I thought it'd be a cool place to play, it was easy for me to get to, I'd come off work and go play a game. I haven't read, I, I haven't rented the field since that 10 years ago. I, I just wouldn't rent the field again, and it's not in good condition to play. There's rocks in it, it hasn't been upgraded, it hasn't been updated, the grass is rough, balls don't bounce true, it's wet. It could look turfed. So what are the benefits of turf? This is Nazos West, you see the same goose marks through it. The fields just retain water because they're dirt. So historically, we have budgeted about $6,000 per year to maintain the Omen Camera, Nazos and West, Nazos East and West and Reskin Parks baseball fields. $6,000 a year. We are not keeping up and maintaining the fields to the best of our ability. Because we only have five baseball fields in the village, the ability to rotate and use fields as our kids grow and the program grows is not, is not there. So the fields have to be played on every day because there's no, we can't just rotate fields between different locations because of age groups and because we don't have that many fields. Parks Division staff has been reduced from 13 full-time to eight. So we've reduced our Parks Division full-time staff that maintain all of the athletic fields and all the grass and all the parks in the village by five full-time people. That is a significant time crunch on them to maintain athletic fields every day. The grass at Camera and around the cricket pitches gets cut three times a week. The grass at the athletic fields gets cuts three times a week on the infields. That's a lot of maintenance for our guys when we only have eight of them. And we've heard commentary throughout the course of the summer about garbage in our parks, other things in our parks, other issues with our parks. A big part of that is our full-time staffing has been reduced by five. So we have to figure out other ways to give our staff more staff time to maintain the parks, weeding, other grass cutting, garbage, maintaining the landscaping, all of that. Benefits of our, of moving to turf. Reduced maintenance costs for fertilizer, weed killer, field drying chalk, field playability. We lose, over the course of nine months between April and October, 20 to 25 days of playing time because of rain and because of fields, soccer fields and baseball fields retaining water not being playable. So 20 to 25 is a, is a good average for our fields. Saves time for park employees dragging, lining, maintaining, that's about 20 hours a week of, for our employees to maintain our athletic, for our, our baseball fields, getting them ready for our teams to play. So we mow three times a week. Today, if we're gonna play a baseball game tomorrow, with the weather we had today and the fields became playable, we would have to call in, or if it was Saturday, we call in crews that are on call for overtime to come in and get the fields ready to play. And the overtime cost for, if we had turf fields would be eliminated. The weekend on call for our maintenance people to come in and maintain the fields would be generally eliminated, might need them for other stuff, but not to come in and turnover We have about eight baseball teams total. We rent that large Nazos field, the east field, for about $6,000 per year. That field really is underutilized, it's not used primarily because people don't want, don't want to rent it. One, one organization does because field space is that limited throughout this area of Illinois that people are just, there's so many teams and so many, and so few fields. Recreation Department projects increasing revenues if the two turf fields and the, and the Camera Park soccer field were turfed, to increase revenues between $75,000 and $100,000 per year. Those are pretty standard revenue estimates. They've put a marketing package on, in front of each one of you that you can review, but they have a marketing plan in place to reach out to athletic organizations, high schools to market the fields if they're approved to be turfed for use. That use, the Glumbard Schools have lacrosse, they have rugby, they have one field to use all that. They're looking for space to rent. They've reached out to us in years past to rent space. The travel organizations for baseball and softball dying for places to play and practice. The men's softball and women's softball and coed softball. Providing more opportunity for our fields to be used by more people will bring tremendous amount of revenue back to the village that we don't get today. We lost all of our softball teams when Camera Park lost its field. We lost all of our softball teams to McCaslin and Carroll Stream, primarily because they're turf and you are guaranteed to play, almost every day you are scheduled to play. Rugby's a big sport right now, lacrosse is a, is probably one of the fastest growing sports in Northern Illinois area, right? They're looking for places to play and practice. The cost to turf Camera Park soccer field is about $394,000. That doesn't include the excavation and the site. It's about $394,000. The cost to turf, to Nazos East, the big baseball field, is $139. The cost to turf the west baseball field, the all dirt baseball field, is about 100. All total, to turf all three fields, not including excavation, not including what it's gonna cost to get the site prep done so the turf can be laid, is $636,919,23. That's on a state cooperative bid. It is the best pricing that anybody can get. We've done all the due diligence with that. That's the cost of the turf to be installed. What isn't accounted for is the excavation, and we don't have a good hard number on that, but we expect to have a number on that at the January 19th board meeting to bring back to you. The reason we're bringing this to you today and not in May is because we wanna work and try and get this done by May. We wanna try and have it so that our, our young athletes have a quality place to play this summer. That's the goal. Right? Because we don't normally bring stuff like this at mid-budget because it's usually a big budget, main budget item, but we have the funding, right Bill?
Yes.
And we are in a good place right now from a funding standpoint, and if we don't start the project in, soon as the weather breaks, which with the way that we've had weather, it might be February, as soon as the weather breaks, we'll be able to get these fields turned over, and it's only a six to eight week process to get this, these fields up and running to, from dirt to turf. I do wanna give you though, so, say we are asking for 1.25 million. We don't know what the excavation number is. It might be 900,000. We don't know what, what it's gonna cost to excavate that land yet, right? But we're asking for 1.2. That will include fencing for the Nazos East and West Fields. We're gonna have to look at fencing to go around Camera Soccer Field, just to keep cars from driving down the path and driving onto it. I do wanna give you other options though, right? Because if this is not, if this is expensive, and it's expensive, but to replace Nazos East Field, which is the grass field, to get it so it is playable to a level that most people would wanna play at. We had sports fields come out and give us an estimate on that, and it's 61,000. It's 80,000 more to turf it. The smaller field at Nazos is 26,000. It's 80,000 more to turf it, 70, 70,000 more to turf it. And reduce our maintenance costs, reduce our, our facilities costs, reduce our labor costs, and all of that. It's a 10-year turf. Revenue estimates say it should pay for itself over the course of 10 years. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I've talked to you all today about it, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer questions, as is Keith, and other questions you might have about it.
Yes, Mr. Light, go ahead.
Um, Doug, I like the idea, but one of my main concerns that I've talked about this before was bringing the youth back, bringing the, like, offer, I think it'd be great to offer free T-ball to the, to the, to the kids of the village, residents only, and get the, get the kids back involved again with the parents, and let the parents start working a little bit more and maybe transition into later letting them take this over.
We've had that conversation, and both of those conversations that you brought up.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm all about free T-ball, I'm all about.
That'd be great.
Getting more kids into, I'll pick a sport, if you're a five-year-old.
Yeah.
Free, I don't care what it is, we, we get, we need more, we need more young kids playing more sports and being more involved in outdoor activities than sitting at home. I don't really, don't wanna talk about the second part of that.
Right.
Publicly, but generally, I'm in agreement that the residents should be running the baseball program and football programs if it comes back, not the village.
Right. They can do it right. Uh, just to back.
Doug, if the kids are playing, i- is this more likely for the kids not to get hurt as much if they fall down playing soccer or something, hitting the ground?
Well, at the soccer field, I can't give you that answer. I know that at the baseball field, I wouldn't slide in the field that there is today because the, the ground is not, I'm not exaggerating when I tell you that the first day of opening day should be a rock pickup day. And the amount of, you know, it, the, the soil at Camera East, the grass field, is like your backyard. It's, it's got rocks, it's got everything else that have been grown there for the last 20 years. I don't wanna, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying not to throw anybody under the bus about just how things have been.
Oh, I, I've been there, so I, I, I know.
I honestly.
It's a good idea.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have kids sliding there, I just wouldn't. Right? Or I'd have three or four pair of pants ready for them.
Yeah, being on the Parks Committee, I, I mean, I, I know what they, I know what they look like.
So when it comes to, you know, turf, you know, there's studies out there that, you know, you might twist an ankle more because it's, it doesn't give away, but I think from a, from a injury standpoint of falling, you're probably safer on the turf than you are on grass, some grass.
Okay, how do we, if it's tore up, how do we replace it? I mean, is there?
So it's a 10-year warranty.
A company comes out to?
Yes, so it's, there's a 10-year warranty. The average maintenance cost is about $1,000 per year, and it's literally like sewing in a new patch. So if, you know, if second base gets worn down because of sliding, they come in, they, they cut out that area that, that has got flattened, and they sew in a new area.
Okay, sounds good, thanks Doug.
Mr. Project, yes.
Just.
Oh. Go ahead.
I didn't hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Speak up.
Sorry, I'm sorry, yes, it's your turn.
Uh, Doug, a couple of questions. Can our staff excavate some of that?
I'm gonna say no.
No?
Uh, only because, not that they're not qualified to do it, but warranties, grading, everything that goes along with it, we're gonna bring back to you on the 15th, no, the 19th, on the 19th, a proposal for a company through our co-ops, right? And the fees are very, very minimal, to run this project and coordinate it and be, and project manage it, start to finish, right? Because we're not experts in any of this, and they are. So that'll be on the 19th, you'll have a proposal in front of you to look, look at and review as to the project management of this and what will go into the build of this. But our staff would get rid of some of the spoils that they just pile, right? Because we have a lot of use for those spoils at the golf course. So our staff would get, we wouldn't have the dumping fees, and we wouldn't have the fees going to recyclers, because our staff would, and we have the equipment for it, would bring the spoils to the golf course or bring the spoils to other storage areas we have for future use.
When they excavate, how deep are they gonna go?
They gotta go grade that, they gotta figure that out.
That's, that's one of the things that the company will have to bring back, they'll have to go out and give us that, because we don't know the answer to that.
There, there's probably between third base and first base at the west, at the east field, the grass field, I'm gonna guess the slope is 18 to 24 inches.
Oh, wow. That's deep. Now, how you can propose to try and get some teams to come and play in Glendale Heights?
So you have the marketing plan in front of you?
Yeah, well, that's just paper.
I know.
Printed paper.
But that's the plan to.
What's our plan?
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
The plan is to market our fields to all the, the, all the surrounding local youth travel baseball teams and high schools and men's leagues for softball and women's softball and girls' softball. The, the multi-purpose use of those fields, if they're turfed, because the, the, the east field will be set up for 70, 80, and 90-foot bases, right? So 12 through 15, 16-year-olds will be playing there, right? The smaller field will be set up for eight through 13-year-olds, right? So you have this truly multi-purpose field that all age groups can use, it'll be fenced. The soccer field, you know, lacrosse can come in there and play, soccer can come in there and play. You know, we had a semi-pro football team practicing there one year, they can go play. Men's league soccer can play, men's league baseball can play on the bigger field. So there's, I mean, truly a multi-purpose use of the fields if they, if they're more playable.
Now Carroll Stream, they have a lot of baseball teams playing over there now that I do.
Yeah, in McCaslin, right.
Uh, how are rates gonna compare to theirs? Are you gonna lower the rates, try and steal some of the teams over, or how are you gonna do that?
So in the proposal and the package, we kinda went out and saw what other comparable facilities charge.
Yeah.
And so we've kinda put our rate into about the same price range as that. Doing research and, and hearing what other teams do, quite honestly, it's, there is a shortage of fields, especially fields that they know they can play on, on a daily basis. Obviously, if there's a thunderstorm, you can't play, absolutely.
And, and honestly, the, the, the youth, especially the soccer, right? Soccer is the largest sport we have in Glendale Heights.
Right.
Those kids are not playing on quality field. I, I'm not throwing Keith under the bus or Recreation under the bus. We could do better for them with our fields, and I think we should.
Is our soccer program indoor?
Uh, so, yeah.
Full capacity?
Uh, full capacity is one of those question marks. We have practice time and we have weekends that are filled, we're not filled all the way to the end of the day, but that's part on us and how we market it and what we're trying to accomplish with staffing and that. We have 555 people that played soccer in Glendale Heights in 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Sees and Mick, please.
Yes, uh, Doug, would both fields at Nazos be, uh, baseball fields be able to be used at the same time?
Yes. So there'll be a common fence there. The grass field, the east field, will have a 300-foot fence that goes all the way around it, it'll be 300 all the way around. That equates to the smaller field, a 220-foot fence that will kinda meet the 300-foot fence in the middle, so you have a, you have kind of a shared center field. But the. Um, but the uh shorter field will have a two hundred and twenty foot fence, which is Little League standard, two twenty. So if we had teams that were playing in the Little League, uh certified Little League, sanctioned Little League, the stand, the authorized fence is two twenty. So uh, that's eight through twelve-year-olds, uh girls softball, a senior softball, uh, pretty much any age group, women's softball, and then uh eight through twelve-year-olds, seven through twelve-year-olds for baseball. And they could go back to back.
Keith, uh, if the scheduling, we approve it and the scheduling goes and you get the the fields by May first, are you gonna be equipped to set up leagues, staff them, have umpires, referees and so on to go?
So the preliminary proposal that we have out there will be kind of a combination of things. We're gonna have to figure out what's the best way for us to run it, whether it's running it ourselves, which is the least likely way, or to look for outside organizations that run the tournaments. There are a number of organizations out there that will do it and do it. They have the connections with the teams, they can do whatever they need to do that way. As far as the rentals, most of those rentals, they get their own, they're, that's their responsibility. The only umpires that we're responsible for are within the in-house leagues.
Yeah, so the in-house leagues will be ready to go. The fields will be available for rent, right? So they'll market the fields to other organizations, the tournaments and make that field part of uh that tournament. And when you go to a baseball or soccer tournament, for that matter, it'll kind of runs itself, right? Everybody knows when their start time is, uh, you don't really need anybody there. You show up, your your game's at one o'clock. The game before you gets over, you get on the field, you warm up, your game goes. And they kind of just run themselves. There really isn't much for us to do from a tournament, if tournaments go there, right? As a destination place. Um, soccer and baseball kind of, because they're so short of fields, tournaments aren't just in one place. You might use five or six different facilities to run your tournament and then everybody reports back and then you have, you know, a championship at one place. So um getting in on that circuit, but also from the in-house perspective, that'll be ready to go. And then just marketing it to the other locations to rent it by the hour, if you will, or game.
Garcia Dickey.
Yes, so Doug, you are looking for one point two million, I believe?
Yes.
Correct. So the funding is coming from, from where the funding is coming from? Do we have like?
It's coming from our general fund.
A general fund or?
Bill?
Okay.
Yes, it's coming from a transfer from the general fund from surplus from the prior year.
Okay, and do we get any special state funding for for this project or or anything like that?
No.
No? Okay, so it's from, uh, my other question is, what is your plan B or backup plan, let's say if you don't get the projected rental income? So we already invested the money and let's say if those fields do not get the revenue which we are looking for.
I I don't, I don't, I don't know if I can answer that question really, cause you hope that it does. If it doesn't, uh, our kids have a great place to play.
Okay, and last question, uh, do you do anything for for tennis?
We can make Wimbledon, I'm up for that. I'm up for making a grass court.
Yeah, I mean, anything for tennis, do we have anything in?
We have, we have uh several tennis courts.
In fact, uh unfortunately for us, tennis being um the sport that it is right now, we have ended up converting Omen Park into a basketball court for one of their tennis courts. And we've actually converted one of Nasos Park's tennis courts into um pickleball. So tennis right now in Glendale Heights isn't a hopping sport, unfortunately.
Oh, so
It, yeah.
Okay.
But at Camera, I'm sorry, at Americana Park across from Camera.
They play all the time.
Yeah, and there's a gentleman out there almost every day with a uh automatic ball server. Um, I bet you the guy's in his sixties, he's hitting, he's hitting a hundred, two hundred tennis balls a day out there. Uh, when the weather's good. So tennis is is there, not the, not as few. With our population, you'd think it'd be a bigger sport with our demographics. Um, but it's not, but I'm, I'm all in on making Glendale Heights a destination location for recreation.
Okay. Thank you.
Garcia Light.
Doug, as has been said, if you build it, they'll come. Okay, we get the 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 fields all dialed in nice. Do we have infrastructure to handle this, parking?
So the parking at Nasos is there, right? You have two different parking lots for parking. You have overflow parking to the streets, the neighborhoods. You have overflow parking at Hall School on the weekends and they're not gonna care if you're using their ho- Hall School. Um, so there's plenty of parking at Nasos. And, you know, baseball games are hour and a half, two hours, you're in, you're out and things are always moving back and forth. You know, there might be some overlap time, but uh the two parking lots at Nasos, I think, can handle um the fields. Uh, the overflow parking on the streets and the school, uh, I think will handle all the
I've been to some big tournaments over, was it McCas- McCaslin?
Yep.
Where they have every field and and
Yeah.
These are kids playing, they're adults.
Yeah, yeah, and we don't have four fields, right? And we don't have, uh, we don't need that capacity. And we look, we're looking to steal some of their teams, right?
Big boys.
But but they're, uh, yeah, you know, my sons play out there four days a week, right? Uh, I'm there a lot and it's, it's a cool place to play. But the fields there are ten years old.
They're bad.
Right? And if we, if they're on the outside and we're coming on the inside, we have a place to pick up teams and pick up places.
Doug, I go one, one, excuse me, oh, one quick question. The first year might be a little iffy.
Sure.
You get the word out. Second year should be really good, I think.
I I I'm
And the following years.
I I'm hopeful, you know, that uh twenty twenty-three, if we get the project up and running, that uh things are good, I hope in twenty twenty-four, things are great.
Yeah. Okay.
I just got one more question. Keith, you can bring this to the Park Committee and we can get something proposed, I mean.
On fees and other stuff?
Fees, I mean, and and what we, what we wanna do, but it's a good idea if we can have somebody else run our programs instead of, instead of us.
Definitely.
I think that's obviously something that's been discussed recently and I think that everybody is thinking the same thing, which is we need to look at that as an option.
Right, instead of, instead of us doing it, having somebody else, that's all we do is turn on the lights or whatever we have to do so they can play ball.
Yep.
Now, my second question is, I didn't see anything in the budget about the park. Supposedly on the other side of town on North Avenue, we would, we would
The Simon's property?
Simon property.
So in the, in the original budget, we have money set aside to do some preliminary planning of that. We would not be doing that until most likely spring of twenty-four because I'm hoping to go for an ASLAD grant to help offset the fees.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? None? Is there a motion to approve the mid-year?
Hold on, Mayor, uh, Bill needs to finish her.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm finished.
Are you done?
Done, he's done.
Wanna ask him what you're asking for?
We would like to entertain a motion to approve the FY twenty-three mid-year amendments as presented.
Uh, Mr. Bill, let me ask um a few questions for uh Mr. uh Flint. Have to be there, you know. Uh, for this project, do we have demand, you know, I know, uh, um, I got lit- answer. Um, but do we have, you know, when these grounds are ready, we put money and gro- grounds are ready?
Yeah.
Do
I think the demand is there from all the organizations that are looking for places to play. And when you look at all the athletic organizations and teams, uh, softball, baseball, soccer, rugby, lacrosse, they're all dying for field space.
So I mean, it's a hard market, you know.
Well, actually, I think it's, I I honestly think it would be an easy market to sell and rent. And I think that um I I think that it'd be a very revenue positive project.
Good. Second question, reputation of vendor. Do we have reliable this vendor, you know? It's good, you know?
Yes, so we're gonna, we'll, you, the board will be able to vet them at the next board, at the nineteenth board meeting. Um, PF Passion or?
FH.
FH Passion. They're a worldwide company, nationwide company, actually, at least, uh, located in Illinois. Uh, they do projects for government uh throughout Northern Illinois. Uh, they have a whole sub, a whole division um relegated to strictly working with government. So they're, they're vested in government, uh, we get the best pricing, uh, and they're come with references that are all very, very positive.
Number, third question is the, is this bid process fair, you know, is open to each and everybody who wants to come and, you know?
Yes, so everything we're doing is state bid, right? So we have procurement pricing from, from state bid pricing, which is the best pricing we can get. So we're just buying it off the procurement system for uh state bid pricing. We're not going out to, there's only two manufacturers of turf, so kind of know what their pricing is. But uh, it's all coming from uh our state bid pricing.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, uh, is there a motion to approve the midterm, a mid-year budget review? I'm, uh, Pat and the second, who's uh Mrs. Smith?
Second.
I make a motion to approve the second quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget.
So I got Mrs. Smith is second, you know. Uh, discussion. I believe discussion is
Peter?
Yes.
Does that, should the motion be as amended? Or is this proposal included in the uh budget?
My, my understanding, the motion would be as presented.
Okay.
There were no amendments that were made to
Okay.
So discussion is done and I need roll call vote, please.
Trustee Sadiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The fiscal year twenty twenty-two, oblique twenty twenty-three budget update is approved.
Thank you.
Uh, D, public discussion of agenda items. We now Yeah, we now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
Once again, Michael Anoveros. A couple of questions. First of all, how do we get a copy of the presentation for the budget that was just done?
Please state your name and your address.
I did say my name, Michael Anoveros, at eighteen seventy-one Scarborough Drive in Glendale Heights. And thank you for a copy right there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now that the cannabis dispensary has been approved, what is the estimated timeframe for the opening?
They're going to need
They're gonna turn in their permit, uh, they started today, they're gonna finish up with it. The build-out should be pretty quick. It's for business that's inside town, in town, that's gonna do the build-out right off of Brandon.
Okay.
So it's good, so um they've got all their plans, they're gonna turn into Mike.
That's correct, they need to go and submit for permit, we'll go through our general process of review and then when they begin building, we'll provide inspection services. So I would, I would expect for a remodel, ex- expect on the order of six to nine months, be my guess.
So before end of year.
I would venture to guess so, but without the applicant here, they they would have a better handle on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then during your presentation on the financial budget, you were talking about that there's gonna be additional revenues with additional video gaming machines? Is that because of new business coming to Glendale Heights or is that additional machines for existing businesses?
I believe it's both. Businesses who have maybe five machines that have increased to six and then additional businesses that are not currently licensed.
Okay. And then my final question in your presentation is why you were talking about acquiring additional vehicles for public works, if I'm correct. Um, do those include maybe electric vehicles moving forward?
Uh, possibly. And I say that only because we don't have the infrastructure in place right now to charge electric vehicles. And they're really not, um, there's only one real division, our community development division, that they're actually suitable for. Our police department is equipped with hybrids. All of our squad cars are hybrids or moving to hybrids. Uh, but for a public works perspective, for trucks, that kind of stuff, plowing, uh, really the only suitable use of electric vehicles for us is uh community development.
Okay, thank you. And also my last statement, I want to thank the board uh for approving the dispensary. It's sorely needed income uh for the village of Glendale Heights and for the programs that you're talking about. So again, I want to thank you very much for passing this through.
Welcome. Anybody else from public? None? I need motion to adjourn. Uh, trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, trust- trustee Pat. Vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sadiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Muratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Yes, motion making is adjourned.